Okay, well then we'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting. It is Wednesday, September 16, 2020, and it's 6:14. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Mosca?
Here.
Councilmember Crandt?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Here.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Here.
Record will show that all members of the city council are present.
Okay, thank you. And if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so now we are on to oral communications.
Yes, Mayor, we do have three. First speaker is Terri Anne Skelly. Terri, you will have three minutes, and you can start whenever you are ready.
Hello?
Yes, great.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Great, great. Good evening, City Council. My name is Terri Anne Skelly. I have a concern I'd like to share with you regarding the November election and candidate forums and media, particularly as it has to do with Measure H. As city council members, you are in a unique position to understand that difficulties come from ordinances dictated by the initiative process. Some voters may not realize that Measure H cannot be changed in any way without another expensive election. I hope that you will consider providing this information to voters when you're participating in forums or giving media interviews. Regardless of how people view personal marijuana use, they should know that with Measure H, we will lose the open and transparent process for the community to have its say on these businesses. Also, Measure H would not allow the city to collect taxes on the sale of marijuana. However, it would create a huge financial burden on the city. The state does not provide any funding for overseeing park businesses. That burden falls entirely on city staff and local law enforcement. I know this matters to all of you. Please also tell the voters, thank you.
Thank you. Our next oral communication is Michael George. Michael, if you can just unmute yourself and then he can start. Michael, if you can hear me, I can see that your microphone is muted. Oh, there you go.
Okay, I got it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. My name is Michael George. I reside at 1703 Gaskin Road in Encinitas. I want to thank the members of the city council for their service to the community. I am here today as president of the Encinitas Bachi Club, which uses the bachi courts at Oak Crest Park. These courts, which are open to the public, are in need of sunshades. Our membership is made up of many senior citizens. During the heat of the day, there is no shade for anyone wishing to play bachi. It seems there is a master plan for expenditures for sunshades for playgrounds. This measure was put into effect in 2015. Somehow, the bachi courts at Oak Crest were not part of the plan. We, Encinitas Bachi Club Board of Directors, have been in contact with the parks and recreation management and been told that we are not part of the plan for sunshades at Oak Crest Park Bachi Courts. It seems they, management, are not able to do anything for the community because we are not included in the plan. We feel this is an oversight, an appeal to the city council to rectify this error. We, Encinitas Bachi Club, have faithfully maintained the courts since they were built. Our members contribute their knowledge, effort, and time so all in the community can benefit from the use of the courts. Sunshades would encourage more community members to use the courts during the daytime, when it's very, very hot. There are other cities which have provided sunshades for their bachi courts. Many, too many to mention here at this time. But the sunshades would encourage more members of the community to use our asset, the Encinitas Bachi Courts at Oak Crest, to the fullest and increase this use during the daytime. I know that at this time you won't be able to take any action, but I would like to request that you consider somehow making us part of this plan. And so I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our case this evening.
Well, thank you, Mr. George, and I'll just ask our interim city manager if she has any response to that comment.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Madam Mayor. I know that Acting Director Carlin has let me know about that. As Mr. George says, the master plan identified shade mostly over playgrounds. However, staff is talking and looking at some options. I understand the bachi courts are very long. And of course, where they're at, as you know, shade structures do still have to be anchored, so staff is looking at that and as Acting Director Carlin had approached me to see if there's something we can do. Obviously, as well, it will be, it will take funding, and unfortunately, shade structures are not inexpensive, as you know, since that's come before council. But that is something that the department can work on, but likely it would be then an ask that may have to come to council at a later date for a budget appropriation in the next budget year. If those shades are able to be put up, so staff is looking at the different options that might be able to happen.
Okay, great. I see Councilmember Hubbard has her hand up.
I have a question for Mr. George, if you're still on the line.
Yes.
I'm assuming this is mainly senior citizens at play?
Many of our members are senior citizens, yes.
Okay, because I'm thinking this is one of the few probably active things that some senior people do, which to me means the shade is even more important. Are you asking for shade across the whole bachi?
No, ma'am, just that.
Like umbrellas on either end to sit while you're waiting for your turn?
Yes, we're not asking for shade across the whole bachi court area. We would like shade over the, there's four benches, two at each end of two courts. And we would appreciate some kind of shade structure above those benches, if you will.
Okay.
And I don't have any idea of how much it would cost, but.
You don't need to. That's all I needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. We have one more.
Our next speaker is Alexander Riley.
Mayor and council, I was actually wanting to speak tonight about 11A in North Lucadia. Though I'm glad to.
I have you down for both, oral communications and 11A. So are you speaking for both or just 11A?
Just 11A. We can wait.
Okay, then we'll hold your comments until 11A. And then I have one more. Cindy, are you speaking during oral communications or are you speaking on 11A? Cynthia?
I excuse myself from speaking earlier today. Thanks.
Okay, so you're not speaking?
No, not tonight. Thanks.
Okay, great. Then that concludes our oral communications, and then we'll have two speakers on 11A.
Okay, great. Then before us, we have the consent calendar, so 8A through 8D.
Your Honor, do we want to do the report from closed session?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry about that. Yes, report from closed session.
Sorry, I should have raised my hand. I just thought I'd jump in there really fast. Thank you, Mayor and council, and members of the public. The council met in closed session on all three items. The first, conference with legal counsel, which was with special counsel concerning City of Encinitas versus the Department of Housing and Community, and there were no reportable actions from that matter. Number two is significant exposure to litigation, and council met with a special counsel on a matter of exposure and had a discussion with council. There's no reportable action on that item. Those two items took up most of the time, and the council began a discussion on the public employee performance evaluation of the city attorney. That will resume, I believe, at the next council meeting on September 23rd, and that concludes my report out.
Okay, thank you. Now we have closed session.
There are no changes to the posted agenda, and no one has removed items from the consent calendar.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
Just one moment here. Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Crandt?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent calendar passes unanimously.
Okay. Our next item is informational item. This is 11A, informational report on that complete and process for Northern Lucadia, including but not limited to parking, road improvements, sidewalks, pedestrian paths, crosswalks, traffic signals, drainage improvements, and possible rail crossings. Do we have public comments? I know we have at least one.
Yes, Mayor, we have two.
Okay, let's hear the staff report, then we'll have the public comments, and then we'll have council questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to highlight the collective efforts of the Development Services Department.
Are you going to share the screen?
Our focus tonight is on the North Lucadia efforts of the Development Services Department. North Lucadia is a community at the northwest corner of our city, bounded by the Five Freeway to the east and Lucadia Boulevard to the south. Within the last five years, the team has worked through several projects to address different needs of the North Lucadia community. We have improved traffic, improving the paving condition at Neptune, Eolus, Vulcan, Hermes, and La Costa. We have increased the amount of parking available along Vulcan to the tune of 100 additional spaces. We've improved stormwater at 11 different sites throughout North Lucadia and improved mobility throughout the entire region, increasing pedestrian capabilities along Neptune, cycling along La Costa, Coast Highway 101, Lucadia 101 Main Street, offering, supporting bike racks, and offering pedestrian safe crossings, raised speed tables, and rectangular rapid flashing beacons. And if I may, I'd like to illustrate these improvements as we have completed them within the last five years. Here we have at La Costa, the overlay and green colored bike lanes, and at Neptune, the slurry seal and pedestrian walkway, which is largely popular among our many residents and visitors that enjoy our city. Here we see the greenback sharrows and the Lucadia 101 Main Street bike racks, offering a safe place to store your bike as we enjoy the 101. To the right, we see the raised speed tables that offer safe pedestrian crossings, increasing the mobility of our city and our residents. Here I have a picture of our Vulcan Phase 1 parking improvements, and you will soon hear that we will embark on our Phase 2 parking improvements. But this is what we can imagine. In the beginning, dirt in the NCTAD right-of-way, and a collective effort of our council and our city planning members and engineering members to secure the right-of-way so we can increase the amount of parking that is available. To the right, you see what the finished product would look like. Several clean, even, well-grated parking and impervious to allow the infiltration of stormwater into the ground. With respect to projects that are in progress, the team is focused on a number of efforts to further improve our city and bring it forward into the future, encouraging further traffic efforts, such as the signal at La Costa and Vulcan, the design which has been completed. We will be bringing that forward to council to consider on November 18th. We will continue our pavement rehabilitation efforts. We intend to award a pavement contract that will include Andrew in the immediate, using funds from last year, but it will proceed immediately and be completed by the end of this calendar year. We will also be going out for award of additional paving, which will see the Lucadia, Scenic Court, Hillcrest Drive, and Sheridan paved by the end of the fiscal year. Further, we are working forward on the Hygiea Roundabout, which is scheduled to go to construction in fiscal year 21 to 22, aggressively pursuing design to completion. Our stormwater improvements, we will also continue. We are looking to award our Vulcan Phase 2 parking project, which will include a drainage feature. We have completed designs on the Jason Storm Drain and the Orpheus Green Street Storm Drain as well. In terms of mobility projects, we have heard our residents, we understand that there is a connectivity gap north of Hillcrest, approximately 50 linear feet. We expect to award a contract that will be able to address this gap in the next few months. Additionally, we have completed design and plan to go to Traffic Commission to evaluate the location of three safe crosswalks, which will connect our parking, our extended parking, both Phase 1 and Phase 2, to the east side of Vulcan. Finally, we also have a pedestrian signal and crosswalk at Diana and 101, which is preparing to go out to construction. As before, I'd like to illustrate these efforts in concept so that we can have a visual image of what we can imagine in our future. Here we have the Lucadia and Hygiea Roundabout, which will be the third in a sequence of three roundabouts along Lucadia Boulevard, offering traffic calming and continuous traffic, which is actually better for our environment. Here we have our Vulcan Phase 2 drainage feature, which we are working collectively with NCTD to provide a fluid place to address erosion and where water will then be transferred and deposited. Here we have the gap that I spoke of, a 50 linear foot segment that we have heard our community members, and we are actively working to address this issue and create connectivity on the east side of Vulcan. Here are our three proposed locations for the North Lucadia crosswalks and rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Our proposed three locations, which will again be considered by our Traffic Commission, but certainly we welcome community input, are at Orpheus, Sanford, and Andrew, all of which are in Vulcan. Here I have just a few additional projects that I wish to bring to your attention. As I had previously mentioned, the Vulcan Phase 2 parking improvements, this will be an additional 150 parking spots in addition to the 100 that have already been constructed. And as I have mentioned, we are looking to go to award on the 23rd of September. And I would be remiss if I did not mention the tremendous accomplishments to entitle the entire Lucadia streetscape project. Design is nearly complete. As most of you know, we've awarded Phase 1. The rest of streetscape, as I have mentioned, has already been designed or is near design. Sorry, I misspoke. Here I'm illustrating the location of the extended parking, the 150 spaces that we will be constructing in the near future. And to round out our projects, I wish to also highlight the planning studies that we will bring, bringing council to, council to consider. We have our Moodle Alternatives Project, which we will be bringing council for a November 2020 award. We have our Cross Connect final study, which we will be bringing to council for our final presentation this winter. We have most of the information already completed and are just finalizing the cost information, as we have learned quite a bit from our L-Portal efforts and understanding what it takes to build an NCTD right-of-way. We will also be bringing the Lucadia Area Watershed Master Plan, which has to do with stormwater management this winter, and the Quiet Zone feasibility analysis. We will also be bringing that in spring of 2021, which will consider a quiet zone along Lucadia Boulevard. Before I move on to the next topic, I do just want to point out that the current capital improvements program budget ranges from 11 to 30 million. This year's budget is set at about $14 million. The strategic planning session that is held each March helps us to better understand the priorities of our citizens and our council, and we carry those priorities forward each year. We have approximately four CIP project engineers and one specialist that are carrying forward these critical projects. And with respect to traffic, which issues are constantly evolving, we have two traffic engineers and one specialist. All of our engineers are working at full capacity to deliver the projects I have already presented, to ensure that we can continue to improve mobility, provide parking, provide safe passage and drainage and mobility. That as we consider the future, we just need to keep in mind that, again, our resources are somewhat limited by the fact that they are fully, their workloads are full at this point in time. However, I do want to point out there are a number of items that have come to our attention and that could be considered in future years as part of our evaluation. We have potential traffic calming studies in residential areas of North Lucadia. Stormwater improvements, pipeline infrastructure at Vulcan and along the 101, and potentially the construction of additional storm drains that have already been designed. We have mobility projects. Our engineers have looked at the possibility of a prefabricated pedestrian bridge at La Costa. However, that has not yet been prioritized, as well as sidewalks along the entirety of La Costa Avenue. Our Cross Connect study did, however, identify two locations for undercrossings along the NCTD right-of-way at Sanford and Jupiter and at Hillcrest. However, as I have mentioned, that report is in draft, and we do intend to bring it forth to council for consideration later this winter. Finally, we have the corridor revitalization. What I mean by this is the extension of our Phase 1 Lucadia streetscape. The remaining segment is basel to La Costa and could be constructed in segments or a singular segment. Currently, it is prioritized as Tier 1, however, those remaining segments are not yet funded. At this time, I would like to open up to the council if there are any questions regarding my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see if we have any questions from council. We'll go to public comment, and then we can go to council comment. Let's see. Not seeing any hands up. So let's go to the two public comments.
Okay, Mayor. Our first public speaker is John Helly. John, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, John. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. John Helly, I'm speaking to you tonight to request that this update on Lucadia include the status of the hydrology study by Q3 that was due in August 2020. That study was commissioned by the city council last year with a hurry-up, quick study upfront to address the streetscape aspects of the flooding problems in Lucadia and resulted in an unsubstantiated suggestion from the contractor of a $5 million storm sewer drain pipe of 16 inches with drainage to groundwater that would be a solution. I am looking forward to the complete study of the entire Encinitas watershed complex. I understood it was going to be citywide, which I understand this study to be, and how it comprehensively addresses the citywide hydrological issues that the city faces regarding climate change. I expect that this study will reflect how it is governed by the Climate Action Plan, which is used as a substitute for what would normally be expected to be changes to the general plan, given that the Climate Action Plan bypasses the general plan. And I would further expect an approach to dealing with the recent likely groundwater-influenced failures of the bluff and the ruling by the United States Supreme Court that diverting wastewater to groundwater is the functional equivalent of a point source discharge. Furthermore, how the proposed hydrological management approach will account for the further proposed $13 million L-Portal underpass and how the probable flooding of that underpass will be managed and what additional marginal costs that subsystem will be. Specifically, I would like to know when the hydrology study will be available for public review, how it will be distributed, what procedure will be used to submit comments for the record, and what forum will be provided to discuss review comments, please. Additionally, I wonder why the agenda item refers to Northern Lucadia as a proper noun. Is this a new term of art for the record or just a lack of familiarity? Finally, some of the planning for Lucadia is driven by a profound misunderstanding of coastal hydrology, and the mayor has publicly taken the position that there are no options and our back is against the wall on housing alternatives. I would like to point out that it is obvious that there is a great deal of commercial retail space with existing parking integrated with mass transit that is available or becoming available for rezoning to affordable housing without densifying the coast under the pretense of greenhouse gas reductions. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Alexander Riley. Alex, you can start when you're ready.
Thank you. It's glad, it's good to see that Lucadia and especially North Lucadia is finally getting a little attention. It's been far too long. Many of these issues that have been brought up today have been going on for decades. The entire time, many of you have been on the council, obviously. And when are we going to get true action steps, dates, and funding to get these projects finished and get Lucadia up on par with the rest of the city?
Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that does conclude comments for 11A.
Okay, thank you. Any council comments or questions?
Yeah, I have my hand up.
Oh, you do? Okay. I don't see it, but I'm eager to call on you, so please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And I also would like to thank staff for putting the report together in a fairly short order. I also would like to thank Lucadia Now, or is it Now Lucadia? There's a group of folks up in Northern Lucadia who have been quite active over the last year, and it is great to have a strong advocacy group for all these things. And what I would like to point out is that many of these things didn't just appear out of thin air when the when the Northern Lucadia group started talking about it, they were already in the queue and underway. So I think that it's important to note that throughout our city, we are challenged by many, many, many more needs than we have the resources for. So to Director Doherty's point, we have challenges trying to make the many things that we need happen. So we are always juggling that, and I think we have done it in a fairly responsible way. So we will continue that. I also am very pleased to see that the improvements that we made to along Vulcan in Phase 1 got the support of the city council to complete that project to make it a Phase 2 so that the whole stretch from La Costa Avenue to Lucadia Boulevard has those same improvements. has those same improvements because while they are modest, they are very important. And so I think it's critical that we continue that project and I look forward to being able to address that with a phase two, as well as working with NCTD cooperatively to extend that concrete culvert to deal with some stormwater issues that have have been fairly persistent and were very obvious when we had our 780 year storm a year or so ago. So thanks to Lillian and her team, especially Ed Wimmer and Jill, who have their work cut out for them. The list of staff people that were on in the PowerPoint presentation, they are dealing with projects all over the city, not just in Northern Lucadia. So we have been pushing them hard. There are some very important things that need to be done in Northern Lucadia, and I will continue to advocate for that. And I appreciate all the support that we've had from my colleagues on the council as well as the folks from Northern Lucadia who have become quite active and have helped with the moving these projects forward. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering if staff could respond to the public question about the stormwater study. But just basically an update on where we are with that study or what what is the result of that study?
So I believe the study that Dr. Helly is referring to is Lucadia area watershed master plan. I believe Ed is on the phone and I'd like to include him. However, our plan at this point with respect to that master plan, which will look at the management of stormwater throughout that entire area, the Lucadia area, is not a citywide master plan. So I do just want to clarify that point. However, we will be bringing it before council this winter. We will make sure that we publish the entire report and make it available for for public comment. And so certainly, everything we do, we want to ensure that we have the input of our residents and sound decision making as we move forward. Ed, did you want to add to that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I don't have very much more to add than that. We we don't, we didn't have enough money to request council for the full citywide plan. So so it is a Lucadia area watershed master plan. It only addresses Old Encinitas and Lucadia. So that is a good clarification. Q3 consulting did advise me that they are behind. And so the schedule now is to bring that to council in the winter. I've been in contact with Dr. Helly quite frequently via email, and I've advised him that as soon as we have a good schedule, I'm going to advise him and Ms. Cameron of the schedule. We do want to include Dr. Helly and Ms. Cameron and of course, the whole public in in get get their input on the study. And as soon as I get the schedule from Q3, we will make that available. But we're we're targeting the winter and as soon as I get the schedule, we will promulgate that.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, I can see.
Just a quick question for Ed while he's still on the line. Another point of clarification for the questions that Dr. Helly brought forward. And the concern that the big water solution for Lucadia might include a pipe that that percolates stormwater back into groundwater, is that an accurate description?
No, that that is not accurate. The the 60 inch pipe does not is not perforated. It it is a completely solid pipe, and so it does not percolate. So that that was not a correct description either, but it's hard for members of the public to understand something when they haven't seen it. So I I do agree with Dr. Helly. He he needs to see the items. It is this council's modus operandi to have the public see items. But we can't show them until they're ready and they're just not ready yet. And Q3 will give me a schedule for when they'll be ready.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for clarifying that. I agree that it's hard to understand how the hydrological functions work there because we haven't seen it either. And so I think oftentimes we're asking as council how the the water will be managed. So it was a good question. And one final clarification, which I learned in the meeting where we approved the L Portal undercross and that 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 the question was, how will the flooding be managed there? And the answer that Lillian provided at that meeting was that there are pumps as part of the L Portal undercross that keep it from being flooded. Is that accurate as well?
That is accurate. There's a pump system that prevents that from flooding. And then there is a pipe system that carries the water down to the Cottonwood Creek watershed. And again, that's all been thought out and engineered, but Dr. Helly hasn't seen that either. And so it's really hard to make assumptions about something you haven't seen. But again, his description is not how the engineering has been done.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
And and I I would say that the the decision to phase to to only build the first phase of the streetscape changed the the emphasis on this Q3 study to include the entire watershed, correct?
That's correct. We've had to be extremely nimble based on COVID, based on the money situation. These are very challenging times, I guess, is how I'll say it politely.
Did you have anything else to say, Councilmember Crams?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I had another couple of questions about the standardization of the parking there on Vulcan. I know that we're coming up to the next phase and something that we had discussed a while back, and I just don't know where it landed, was that the parking would be parallel so that cars could be better organized so that there'd be more room for strollers and walkers and everybody else who'd like to use that. Is that idea still alive or have we we've decided on the nose in parking?
The contract that we are set toward is to maximize the amount of parking that is available by nose in parking, which will carry on the phase one sort of perpendicular parking to the railway line, which is what has been designed. There are likely reasons for that, and I can certainly rely on Ed for that. But I would just point out that this is temporary parking and and we could look at other designs and not and that does not rule out opportunities in the future. Ed, did you want to speak to the design?
You described it perfectly. We've got similar parking style that we've done in phase one. And then for the the last additive alternate towards the very end up by La Costa at that part, we'll be switching to the other style of parking.
Okay, that's good. That answers my question. So I guess the concern I would have is that if the goal is to maximize parking, I'm glad you said temporary, Lillian, because it sounds like we might have even added more capacity for parking than we had before, which is good for the temporary. But I hope in the long term, we're considering using that space for active transportation as well.
I concur.
When we say long term, we're talking about when the coastal rail trail goes in and that's the Sandag project? Is that what we're we're talking about long term?
No, I I think it's sooner than that. I think that, you know, we we come up with, take a look at some alternative designs. They're they're currently using wheel stops to on the perpendicular parking and, you know, if we can come up with something that works for everybody and and can pass muster with all the necessary agencies, I would I would be looking to you know, parallel park and and make use of the space to the west of the parallel parking. It would end up being looking very similar to what you have on Santa Leo Avenue right now, where the parking is part of the coastal rail trail. And so it's my hope that once the phase two is completed and we've we've you know, continued that project, that we can start talking about some alternatives to what the way it's currently arranged. But I know there are pros and cons to everything here, and so I'm looking forward to the community conversation about it.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you for the presentation. Yes.
One other question. The the intersection at La Costa Avenue and 101, we had initially in streetscape been planning a roundabout there and because of some issues with a roundabout and the hotel and their entitlements, we ended up with a signalized intersection there instead. There were some improvements to the north east corner of the that intersection that were scheduled to be part of of the Surfers Point project that is no longer in the works. And, you know, I don't know if it's going to resurface or not, but one of the things that I would like to look at is what it would take for the city to construct the 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 design, the planned finished intersection on the northeast corner, because it it was going to increase the number of crosswalks and it was going to increase the, you know, the mobile, the multimodal opportunities to use that intersection more effectively. So I don't know what it would take, whether we'd have to get the property owner to agree or whether it's already right away that we have access to and it's a budgetary matter. But I think it's an important improvement for pedestrians and bicyclists to be able to use the signalization that was going to happen as part of that project. So if Ed could speak to that or Lillian, that'd be great.
I I can I can take that one, Lillian. We can definitely look at that when we finalize the I'll call it phase two, for lack of a better term. We have the the next phase between Basil and La Costa. And that is still not quite final. We're we're at 90% plans on that. So we can absolutely look at that in the phase two for streetscape.
Any chance of getting it into the signalization project for La Costa Avenue with Vulcan?
We can look at that also. Sure. Right now, those plans, right now, they're only signal plans for Vulcan and La Costa. We can look at it to see if it can be added to those plans as well. But we only budgeted 300,000. Well, we're only looking for 300,000. But now that you mentioned it, we can look at it.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, part of it is that there's, there was going to be an additional right turn lane from north on Highway 401. And the the problem, the one of the big problems in that intersection is the short distance between the bridge and 101. And so stacking there, queuing there is is going to be problematic without those improvements. So my hope is that we can take a look at having it done sooner rather than later because, as we all know, traffic issues in that intersection are already fairly significant. I know we've been in construction phase, so it's it's been one of those situations where that's certainly exacerbated the matter. But I think when when the hotel is complete and we've got the additional traffic that that will bring, it would be ideal to have that intersection configured to its ultimate build out.
Okay, having said that, what I should do is find out how long it would take to add that to the design and what the cost ramifications were. And I'll bring that to the Lucadia Streetscape Subcommittee.
Okay, thanks.
If I may, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Crams, I I do think we need to look more closely at the right of way requirements in order to construct those improvements. That would certainly have an impact as well on our ability to deliver that type of project and add it to the La Costa and Vulcan signal. And so I do just want to caution that point.
Yeah, look at it all, please. Yes. And at least then we'll be able to understand, have a better understanding of what the limitations were and go from there.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. You know, this part of our city is a priority for improvements, as are all parts of our city. And I think this council has shown a willingness and interest in making infrastructure improvements so that people can get around more easily and more pleasantly and more safely. And so it's good to hear an update on this part of the city. And I'm looking forward to that a little more robust discussion about a crossing of the railroad tracks and and or crossing out of the bridge at La Costa Avenue and the possibility of a kind of drop in pedestrian bike bridge that we've seen some pictures of, if that was a feasible alternative or option to add to the other things that we're doing. So I'm looking forward to the some of those conversations coming back later. I know that you put this together quickly. But yeah, just to reiterate, you know, we do go over all of our strategic planning or all of our priorities at strategic planning. And then we put everything from all over the city into the mix and have a discussion about what is realistic and possible. So I'm sure that we will continue to do that when these projects, these Northern Lucadia projects are part of that as they have been in the past and will continue to be. So thank you for focusing on this at this meeting. And I think we'll move on to the rest of our agenda, which is nearly finished. Thank you to staff and to the public who spoke. So let me let me get back here to the agenda. Okay, so council member reports. Anybody have any reports they want to share?
I do.
Yes.
Tomorrow, we have a meeting of the North County Transit District Board of Directors. And there will be a presentation on the regional transport, regional transportation plan. And it's it's implications for the North County Transit District. And one of the things that's going to be a big part of the conversation has to do with the rail corridor that runs through Encinitas. Because the RTP proposal as as currently, you know, as part of the big five, five big moves is includes a the possibility of putting a rail system in the I-5 corridor. And so it was important to to me that the the NCTD board have a good picture of what that might mean. And taking off my NCTD Board Chairman hat, I also, as a representative of Encinitas, am very concerned about what that might mean for the rail corridor that currently exists and whether it becomes a kind of an afterthought when we really need some significant improvements to the corridor in order to improve quality of life issues here in our city. So it's an important conversation. I understand. And I know that Sandag is looking at this regionally. And for NCTD, the the Board of the North County Transit District, we're looking at it more from a North County perspective. And then finally, as the representative of Encinitas, it's it's been a critical issue to advance improvements to the rail corridor. So that meeting tomorrow, it's got a lot of railroad geekery in it. And I that that's right up my alley. I'm kind of a train geek. And so I'm looking forward to having that conversation. There will also be a special board meeting that Sandag is going to participate in to answer questions that we have posed to staff at Sandag on this same issue. So I just wanted to make the public and the council aware that there are these very important conversations going on. And there's a lot of information on the in the North County Transit District agenda. It's item number 24 this for the meeting tomorrow. And so if you're at all interested, I would encourage you to take a look at that. It's I tried to split it out and and send it and be able to email it, but it was a 50 megabyte file even with with everything else eliminated. So if you're interested, take a look at the North County Transit District website and you can see the information that's been provided. Thank you.
And just remind everybody what time the meeting is in case they want to tune in.
Meeting is at 2 o'clock. It's available through YouTube. And you can access the link at the North County Transit District website.
Okay, great. Well, that's good update. I'll share that we, today I chaired the Second Litter Abatement Subcommittee at Sandag. So the goal of this is to reduce the amount of trash on our freeways and our in the Caltrans right of way. And we have representatives from all across the county, which is so great on the Subcommittee. And we were moving forward with two ideas or or options. One is an action plan for a TARP Your Load program. an action plan for a Tarp Your Load program, and it's based on something that was pioneered in Marin County. And there's a representative who started that program, who's now moved down here to our county, who's part of I Love a Clean San Diego, who is helping to form this. And the idea is that 75 to 80% of the trucks that arrive at the landfill are not tarped. And when you look at the trash on the side of the road, it does, a lot of it looks like it's blowing out of the back of trucks that are hauling things, not just some paper blowing out of somebody's car kind of thing, but more substantial, like big, long ribbons of plastic and that kind of thing. And then also Sandag or Caltrans is going to provide more information on the Adopt a Highway program. There are 450 approximately adopted on and off ramps, but they think they have the capacity to double that. And I was asking also for more information on the accountability. So when somebody or a company does adopt, how frequently do they have to do it? Who is doing it? How are we? How are they following up on that? Because I see many adopted sections that are quite trashy. And it that really needs to be improved. So the goal is to deal with trash because it's an aesthetic problem. It's a safety problem, like sometimes you'll see bumpers and things on the side of the road that haven't been cleaned up after accidents. And it's clearly an environmental problem because that all heads straight into the ocean. So I'm I'm hopeful that we'll be able to make a real dent in the amount of trash. This seems achievable to me. And we are setting up the partnerships with all these different agencies and people to be able to make that happen. So that's really good news. And then the second Sandag update is that there is a special meeting called for this Friday to deal with the report from the agency's auditor. So there was an audit Subcommittee meeting last Friday, which I watched for three hours. And that is, there was a series of recommendations. And all of that will come to the Sandag Board on Friday and will be reviewing the auditor's report, the management's response to that, and then the outside legal opinion, and then making a decision at the board level. So I'll follow up with you when that's decided.
Can I can I ask a couple of quick questions? Thank you for your leadership on the on the trash along the five. I appreciate you engaging Caltrans in that way. And this is probably more for the city manager than you. But we have the beautiful art at Santa Fe Drive under the bridge. And what what I've discovered is that it's not easy to cross to the other side to enjoy the the other, the all 53 pieces. And what I noticed when I was there the other day is that there are intersections where they have the signs that say, you know, point to go to the crosswalk over there, don't cross here. It's pointing east and the nearest crosswalk, if you go east, is is Nardo and McKinnon. So maybe we can get Caltrans to trade those signs, maybe turn them upside down or something so that the arrow is pointing in the other direction to the crosswalk that's at Scripps Hospital and the Rite Aid Shopping Center. So there are a couple of other things. The south side sidewalk seems to be constantly weeping water. I don't know if Caltrans can do anything about that, but I was surprised to see that. It's kind of green mossy stained and we're gonna have a lot of people looking at these mosaics. So if the city manager could work with Caltrans to address some of those issues related to both trash, which Mayor Blakeshire has taken the lead on, it would be great because we really have made that a special place at this point, and I would like to enhance it by addressing these particular issues. If there were any way to get more crosswalks, that'd be good too. But I I recognize that the freeway interchange is definitely an area where cars are the priority. And so I get why there are more crosswalks. But in the meantime, if there's anything we could do about the signage, I would appreciate it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes.
I was gonna say, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hubbard, if you wanted, Councilmember Crams, this actually came up in a, that's why I think Jody's smiling and the mayor. This actually came up in a meeting discussing improvements for Santa Fe Drive. I will go ahead. I think Jody, Councilmember Hubbard, would like to make a comment. But I will get with Caltrans on the signs and the weeping water. Consider it done.
Okay, and one other thing, and I don't know that there's anything we could do with it about it, but that Rite Aid parking lot, there's no easy way to get down to the sidewalk. And because basically, you know, we've been designing shopping centers that are auto friendly, not pedestrian friendly. So there's no sidewalk. People have to walk in the entryway or the exit is what it what it essentially would be if they park in the bank parking lot and they want to go down. Maybe we can talk with Scripps about the ability to use their parking lot. But in the end, I think that this is going to be popular enough that we should facilitate some methods for people to have the opportunity to see the art. So that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
That's a really good point about that there's really no parking there. But yes, Mayor Blakeshire and I were meeting on the Santa Fe improvements that are going to be coming. And it was one of the things we spent a lot of time discussing, which was where do you put a crosswalk so that you can see the art, so that if you want to even change direction for any reason? And so that is something that the consultants are working on. So that's why both of us were smiling. You, we were only a couple of days ahead of you there.
Yeah, and also weeping water is a real problem because water degrades the asphalt so fast. And we really, it's also obviously a waste of water, but we want to make sure that that none of that happens because that's all brand new. So yeah, hopefully we can get right out there to investigate that. And and the art is amazing and well worth going to and difficult to access on foot, easier to access on a bike because you have more mobility. But Tony just pointed out all the problems of how how to get there on foot. It's very difficult. But it is amazing. It's like an art gallery. It's cool. Okay, so let's see. Don't see any other updates, city manager report?
Oh, none, thank you.
Okay, city attorney report? No, okay. Let's see.
Mayor, could I have just a minute? Would you mind?
City clerk?
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to give an update for the election because some inaccurate information was mailed out to residents of California, several states from the postal service. And it actually does not apply to the state of California. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that ballots are going to be mailed out to all registered voters in the state of California, starting on October 5. For San Diego County, if you have not received your ballot by October 19, you can call the registrar of voters and they will track it for you. And also on the registrar of voters website, which is sdvote.com, you can sign up to receive notifications about your ballot. It's called Where's My Ballot? And it will track it every step of the way. So once you mail it in, it's received, you can get notifications and you will be able to follow it in the process. And then you'll also be able to track and see that it was actually received by the registrar of voters. So I just want to make sure everyone understands. And the other thing is all the ballots that are being mailed out will be, will have a return envelope that's postage paid. So no one will have to put a stamp on it. All you will have to do is seal your completed ballot, make sure that you sign it, date it, and you can put it in the mail or you can drop it at one of the drop centers that will be in the city. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. California is really a model when it comes to voting. I mean, all of those things you just described make it easy to vote successfully. So we're really lucky to live in this state when it comes to voting. So and please offer all updates, city clerk, on voting as as you see misinformation or other things that the public needs to know because it's really important that we share them.
I will. And again, like I said, if everyone, there's lots of information on sdvote.com. So that's a really good resource. It talks about polling places. It talks about voting by mail. There's just a lot of really helpful information on there.
And if you can sign up for status, will it tell you when your ballot's been accepted? And and will it also tell you if your ballot, because your signature doesn't match what what they have on file, has been rejected?
I don't know if it will do that because the ballot, the ballots don't start getting voted or counted until Election Day. But that is a good point, is you need to make sure that you sign, a signature is required. So you need to make sure that you sign it like it is on your driver's license or ID card. So that is, that's an important point.
And usually the registrar of voters counts the initial ballots that come by mail. That's the 8 o'clock ballot tally is has the absentees and those who voted by mail, doesn't it?
Yeah, and it says right here that tracking your mail ballot, when it it'll it'll tell you when it is mailed, received, and counted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, our next meeting is September 23. So we'll see you there. Adjourned.